Good morning and welcome to the May 21st, 2024 special meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. I will call on this meeting to order. We are going to go into closed session today and we'll return probably within an hour. So, breaking. Madam Clerk, do you want to read the, actually, you want to read the closed session item, then we'll do some public comment, and then we'll have staff announcements?
Absolutely. Item one, closed session for today, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
Okay. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, before we go into closed session, I'd like to allow staff announcements. Sheriff, come on out.
Good morning, Chair Gueramendi. Chair, members of the board, county council, nice to see you again. CEO. I just need to make an announcement, not that everybody doesn't already know, because BJ Franson let the cat out of the bag, so to speak, when I told him that I would talk to him at the latter part of June, and I guess he decided that that wasn't soon enough. I am going to be retiring, August 9th will be my out date. It's bittersweet. Been in this county for about 44 years, I've been 44 years. It's been a great, great, great county. I've raised my family here. But it's time to move on. I've had some life changes, no medical, so nothing there, just life changes, so it's time. So, I wanted to let you know, I'm highly recommending that you put UnderSheriff Whiting in as the sheriff to fulfill my term. We've been working on a succession plan for a while, obviously. I don't recommend doing what we did when I got the appointment. Some different scenarios, obviously. Gary had passed away, we didn't have an undersheriff, and they tried to do the appointment with Macedo, but first off, he didn't live in the county, and he didn't want it, because he was too young. We don't have that scenario now. Towin County, Lassen, Lake County, they've all done that, and new sheriffs do set up a succession plan. It's never been a secret that I wasn't going to do the full six years Governor Newsom gave us, so, but it just, it came sooner than what I had anticipated. But I just wanted the board to know, and the public to know, that I will be retiring on August 9th. And it's been an awesome ride, and it's been great working with you folks. I couldn't have asked for a better board. I hear a lot of sheriffs fighting with their board all the time, and I have to thank you folks for not having that, although I'm pretty easy to get along with. Unless you go after my 443 money, I can already see it in your eyes.
You're a part of that change, so we appreciate you.
Yeah. It's been, it's been good. The county's been good to us, and I've always said it, and I've told all of you this, this is our community, it's the community's money, so we need to work together to make it work.
I think I speak on behalf of the board right there. We thank you very much for your service and your friendship, certainly friendship over the last eight years that I've served on this board with you. And we will, we will take, we'll make an agenda item when council tells us is appropriate time to do that, and I hope we get a chance to send you off in style, because you've, you earned it. Thank you, Sheriff.
Absolutely. So, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, folks, have a good day.
Thank you. Seeing no other staff announcements, we'll go into closed session, and we'll try to return here at 10 o'clock or so. Good morning, and welcome back to the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 Special Board of Supervisors Meeting. We are already in order. If you can, board would like to recognize former supervisor Tryon and supervisor Callaway who are joining us today. Welcome. If you could please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Sir. What are the leaders to the flag of the United States of America?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please report out in closed session?
Closed session from May 14th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcos Munoz, and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, Unrepresented Employees. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you.
Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator Marcos Munoz, re-potential purchase price in terms of payment for APN 042033014. Negotiating party, Century 21 Sierra Properties, Jessa Renee Gibbs. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Report out for today, May 21st. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number two.
Item two, action item, Public Works. By a four-fifth vote, authorize the Director of Public Works to, one, execute contract change order 63 to contract 1200-2103 with Second Construction LLC in the amount of $6,14,203.45, and, two, obligate road impact mitigation funds in the amount of 200, or I'm sorry, $2,250,000 to fund the cost of work under the, this contract change order.
Thank you. Robert, this is your item.
Good morning. The item before you is a change order for the construction of a wall that is necessary to stay away from certain archaeological area that has been identified. Part of that cost for the construction, well, the cost of construction exceeds the authority that I have, and so that has to come before the board for an approval. The approval requires four-fifths vote, uh, four-fifths vote according to the statute. That, the item before you also has an element in there for a budgetary amount from the road impact mitigation fee funding to be moved into the wagon trail funding to cover the cost for this change order.
There are questions from the board. Supervisor stopper.
What's the total construction cost at, at this time projected that we're moving up to?
One second, let me get that. We are moving towards that $33.6 million.
Originally, when we started this project, was it projected at $18 million?
$18 million.
For construction?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then we're moving past $33 million most likely in the future when it comes to construction?
It, it's anticipated that we will be reaching a $33.6 million amount.
So, approximately $15 million more than the original cost.
That is correct, sir.
Projected cost.
Yes, sir.
Other questions from the board? Seeing none, public comment on this item? I'll be given three minutes, they'll apply, and if you can't, happy hands are fine.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrew Pereira. I live in Copperopolis, happening to be, for my sins, the president of the HRA, so by default, I represent over 400 residents of that community. I've lived here for nearly 10 years. During that time, I've come to the conclusion that the durability of the wagon trail is a safety priority for this entire community. From a personal perspective, I can attest to this, because I live in Copperopolis, and Angels Camp is the closest destination center for many things. Entertainment, food, medication, emergency medical medication, it's also vital for evacuation and emergency vehicle responses. I enjoy that we travel the road frequently. There have been too many occasions where I have been almost driven off the road by frustrated drivers who drive too quickly on the road, which has many tight bends with negative hammers, and on one occasion, my driver was forced off the road into a ditch, and bad for good fortune would have been killed. I'm sure that the highway patrol statistics will bear out the assertion, this segment of highway is considerably less than ideal, to the point of being dangerous. However, that's just my personal observation and concern. From a wider perspective, Highway 4 is an economic driver for the county. As the gateway into the Sierra Nevadas, and with its highly visible recreation activities and commerce, improving the highway will continue to bring needed sales tax and tourism dollars into the county. It will also open development opportunities that would not otherwise be open due to, due to the parched state of the highway. This is originally connected to Calaveras County, and the importance of this section of the road cannot be ignored. For very important reasons, this project must continue to fruition, and I ask you to work toward a decision that supports a benefit to the county and its residents. Thank you very much.
CJ?
Good morning, honorable members of the board. I have stood before you here in the past, representing various organizations, but today I stand as an individual and a resident of District 5, in the beautiful county we call home. My views here today are completely of my own, and do not represent my employer or any affiliation to an organization that I am a part of. I'm here to share my support for the wagon trail project. I have spent the last 18 years being a passenger and then a driver on Highway 4. I witnessed my first accident in Calaveras County on the day my family was moving to Calaveras County. A motorcyclist had been driven off the road right past Pool Station coming up from Copperopolis. On numerous occasions during the winter months, I've had people veering into my lane and barely escaping head-on collisions. Most recently, I've had the honor of living in Copperopolis and commuting to San Andreas for work. I believe the project is currently in the unsafest it has ever been in the past 20 years, at least before the expectation was a slow, windy road where you knew the turns. Now you have a fully paved road with murderers driving at higher rates of speed and turning into a intersection that turns to 25 miles an hour, which is completely unsafe. Also, the project has not been, also, this project has not been completed, and is a huge disservice to those that we've received the, uh, received the properties from through eminent domain. So, I hope you guys make the right decision. Kicking this project down the line is not a solution, and it may be an impossible idea, but if the board decides today not to continue with the project, I hope that we give the land back to those that we've taken it back, taken it from. And I just hope that we can get this project finished and make it a safer place for our residents and visitors to drive on. Thank you.
Scott, you didn't come to see the show?
Yep, absolutely.
Good morning, distinguished board of supervisors. My name is Scott Nannick, I'm the superintendent of Bret Hart Union High School District, and I'm here representing my district along with the Mark Twain Unified School District and the County Office of Education on behalf of their superintendents. This project has to get completed. We have bus routes going up and down this section of the highway, twice a day, if not three times a day. It's a huge risk and a safety issue for both our buses and our teenage drivers. That road is, has been unsafe for years, we all know about the ice issues. There's not a single person who drives that road regularly that hasn't had that experience. And it's imperative that we allocate the funds necessary to make this safe, to get it completed, so that our schools can function safely and our population is kept safe, but also is brought up. The economic drive that that corridor brings to our county benefits everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there public comment?
Okay, Tryon.
Ladies first.
All right, you know the girl, pretty much.
My name is Marita Callaway. What? No, you know, start again, please. Wagon Trail is a project we should all be quite proud of. I traveled it daily when I commuted to Stockton and another chapter of my life, and it's been on the drawing board for over 30 years. And this is a regional transportation plan project, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors. The RIM funds for this project was also part of the approval by the Board of Supervisors. This is a main transportation corridor serving the Emmett Pass corridor up to Alpine and west on Highway 49. It is not just a project for Angels Camp. We have a signed contract on this project, approved by the Board of Supervisors. It has an underpass, to me, I love this, it has an underpass for cattle crossing. I mean, how many projects do you know of that have a huge tunnel under it, so the cattle can go from one parcel to another? There's more and more orange bedding that's going up due to cultural artifacts, and this co, this amendment, we're sorry that this wasn't part of the overall when we did the initial, you, county, did the initial analysis on the project, but you can do it. You can help complete this project, you can do what's right, you can vote, you must vote yes on this change order. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. So, Tryon, would you like to comment?
I'd like to speak in favor of the change order. I was here when this project was initiated, all the way through till, I think it was 2012, when I was voted off the board. And just to give you a little of my own history on it, I was on the cog, I was on the cog for many years, and was very, was supportive of the wagon trail project. I was not supportive, however, was very, very strongly opposed to the alignment that was chosen. I thought the alignment should have stayed coming off the hill from Copper, should have stayed north of the old alignment, and we should have kept the old alignment intact as a collector road. So, I haven't gotten that off my chest, which is quite frankly, one of the major reasons. It's not the only reason, but it was one of the major reasons I lost the election in that year, because the property owners were strongly opposed to my advocacy of where the alignment should go, and my replacement was strongly supportive of the property owner. So, we ended up with the alignment we have now, which I don't think is a very particularly good alignment. But having said that, the project itself is a very good project, and the project itself needs to be supported. I don't understand how it got divided in half. I think it should have been one priority to complete the entirety of the project. I understand there's, there's funding issues, but if you look at where the new, or Phase 1 ends, it ends right in front of the worst turn on Highway 4, by far the worst turn on Highway 4. And we're going to have accidents, and we're going to have deaths as a consequence of that, if that's not addressed. It's 10 times, it's 100 times worse than, than the intersection was with Pool Station in Highway, in Highway 4, where we had numerous accidents, et cetera. But when you went off the road there, it didn't, it didn't result in deaths and critical injuries. If you go off the road now, where Phase 1 ends, it's a very steep, you know, you're going to be coming 65, 70 miles an hour, and then you're going to hit a turn that goes strongly to your left and has a very street, steep slope off to the right. So, if you leave the road on that turn, you are going to be either dead or seriously maimed. And from there, to tie into where the new road ended, it spits there, is a very small segment, and for the laugh of me, why they would have left that out and ended where it ended, I do not understand that. And I, I think the funding should have come up for the entirety of the project. But we are where we are, and we have Phase 1, and we need to complete Phase 1, and if that takes this change order, we need to do that, and then we need to keep up. There's a highest priority, Phase 2, and that's the shortest part of the road, and that also needs to get completed. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, supervisor. Welcome back to the chambers, both of you. Other public comment on this item?
We do have online.
We have an online public comment? Sir, ma'am, would you please introduce yourself and make a comment, you have three minutes.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Tom Hicks with CB Development Partners. I'm speaking today as a citizen and business owner in Calaveras County. The continued improvement to Highway 4 between Copperopolis and Angels Camp is critical to the community and the continued growth of tourism in our county. As you know, tourism is the largest business in the county, and to the businesses along the Highway 4 corridor, it's critically important. Highway 4 is the critical transportation route to the Sierras and brings in tax dollars and important TOT revenue to the county. As a business owner and operator of two hotels on the corridor, we constantly hear from our guests that driving Highway 4 is frightening to all, to a lot of them, and has an impact on their willingness to travel eastbound to Angels, Murphy's, and other critical tourism areas to our county. Additionally, the continued highway improvements will enhance the evacuation process in the event of an emergency. It's my understanding that a change order is needed to complete the project, so I urge the board of supervisors to continue the completion of the improvements and approve the change order, for life, safety, and economic reasons. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there other comments online?
Yes, Alvin Brolio.
Councilman Brolio?
There we go.
There we go. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, council. My name is Alvin Brolio, an Angels Camp resident and city council member. In my personal opinion, this Highway 4 project is a crucial and key to the economic growth of this county. This project's completion will provide safe travel in and out of our county for, for locals and for visitors, and even serve for emergency services during time of need. There's also a partnership to keep in mind with the City of Angels and Caltrans, who have also put time and financial components, working towards keeping this project moving forward to the end goal of completion. I have no doubt that this project has kept people up at night with funding issues, architectural or archaeological ESA areas identified, right-of-way issues, and engineering issues, to name a few. I feel this project, though, needs to be finished, and from what I read, there's no general fund impact with the RIM funding at this point. So, when this project is done, the county can put a big green checkmark in front of it and move forward to the next beneficial project for this county and the people who live in it. So, I hope this gets a fourth, fifth, four-fifth vote, it needs to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Are there a lot, comments online?
There are no further comments online.
Seeing no further comments online, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and comment. Who would like to start? Supervisor stopper? Get your hand on the button.
You know, I always want to talk, supervisor Gueramendi. Can't stop. We discussed the total cost, Mr. Brolio brought up, you know, cultural resources, those have, you know, been a huge impact, that unforeseen, I mean, great to know that we had so many Native Americans in that area, but at the same time, of course they were, it was near the Stanislaus, and it's a beautiful area, area to live, I mean, that's why people are living there now. So, that, that's, how, potentially, how much more does that cost, Robert? Or what's the whole, because that's beyond the construction.
Excuse me one second. At this point, what's anticipated is the cost for monitoring and recovering the items, the work that's anticipated that in the future, additional about $1.7 million.
On top of what we've spent so far?
On top of what's been spent so far, yes, sir.
What have we spent?
So far, it's about 4, 4.4 million.
So, that's a 6.3 million?
Yes.
Total on top of construction costs?
Yes, sir.
And we're driving up towards a number for completion. What, what's the projected total cost for completion at this time?
For the total of all the work, it's anticipated, this includes the right-of-way, the construction engineering, construction, all, all of it, were about $49.9 million.
Close to 50 million.
Yes, sir.
And originally, that was in the same, 19, 20 million on assumption?
It was more than that, it was, for construction, it was 18.1 million was the construction, and then...
So, it's a 22, 24 something?
Yes.
So, we, the project overall is costing more than that, than originally anticipated?
Yes, about that, yes.
I want to be clear that for this project, the tax dollars, the people of the county, this cost this much to get for this problem?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Those are my questions. I mean, if, if you're willing, I'd like to make a statement before I make my vote.
Yeah, you know, I intend to do the same thing, I like to explain my vote, so Ben, why don't you begin? Yeah, you know, I mean, the road, just for the board and public, the road for good, the road, good, road to hell is paved with good intentions, and it usually is incremental steps as we go along. As Ben pointed out, you know, this price, this project has doubled in cost in the last year, just over a year. I asked myself the other night, actually, last night, how we got here, and I went back and we did the cooperative agreement with Caltrans in November, excuse me, March 2021, high to COVID, losing our CEO, lost our Director of Public Works, we all did it on consent on a five out of five, something that was this magnitude, we did on it, so, you know, we all, it's not all this, not that's... So, you know, we all, some of us know that, certainly I gotta own it, uh, being on there too. However, last spring, we were also at a point with public works where we knew that things were going to spin out of control. That's why we did all the work with the California Transportation Commission. We have now mortgaged future payments to this county, uh, going up to, I think, twenty-twenty-eight for future payments from the state of California for our roads. We've used over eighty percent of the countywide, as it stands today. Over eighty percent of the countywide RIM funds, which should be used all over the county. And, uh, I'm sorry, but I do not have confidence that this project can happen anywhere close to the budget. It's even doubled where we are today. And I'm not willing to support, uh, continuing on a project that could bankrupt this county. So I will be a no vote. Anybody else wanna make a statement before we call the motion?
This, you know, this is a, one of the hardest decisions I've had to make because there are so many points that Mr. Garramindi, I agree with. I was at this point last year, it was like, how do we stop this snowball? And it didn't stop. And we got, you know, just hold on, it'll be okay, I was told, far too many times. But, you know, like I said to some of you before, you know, being in the building industry in the past and building a home, there's nothing worse, worse than seeing a house incomplete that sits there in rocks. You know, it's wasted money. I do see the horizon on this first phase. We're dealing with a decision made by a board in two thousand and fifteen, I believe, that put this in the county's hands instead of letting Caltrans do it. I take responsibility for that as soon as I got on board, and I, I've gotta make that work, because, you know, a deal's a deal. So this is, this is a hard decision for me. And, but I do see this, I do see the horizon on this first phase. I really don't think the county can handle a second phase on its own. I think, uh, my personal opinion is Caltrans has the capacity, the, this is, this first phase is bigger than us. And we just, we're, we, we mortgaged out of future for the whole county. And I, you know, when it comes to, uh, car crashes, weekend before last, motorcycle was got hit right, all four hundred and twenty-six in Garner. And everyone keeps kicking the can. It was put on a priority by Terry Bailey in two thousand one when both, when you were both on board because it was a problem then. So that's my statement.
Any comments from the board? Supervisor Follender?
Thank you, chair. Um, there have been a tremendous amount of unforeseen obstacles. And since I've been on the board, which is just over a year, every time we seem to meet on this, the goalposts change. And I don't think that the goalposts are gonna stay where they are put today, given the, the numbers that we've been given. I think it's gonna end up being more. Do feel that we really don't have any other option. And for the four thousand five hundred people that drive that portion of road every day, I, I, I feel obligated to, to continue forward. So I'd be voting yes.
Anyone want to make a comment? Supervisor Follender?
Thank you. Ben, um, took some of the work that was gonna, um, send my child. You know, back in two thousand and sixteen, when this came before the call, um, I reluctantly voted to support the county in economics project. And then now that I officially sit at the seat at the county, um, you know, my, I've got to continue with, um, that, that, um, that vote and to continue to support it. The biggest outside of the safety concerns, it's just my concern to reaching the contract. Councilmember Brolio brought our partnerships. It's not just a partnership with Caltrans, but the city, the city has levered their dollars as well, um, for this. The Regional Transportation Agency and that board, um, we've all put, um, everything on the table to ensure that this project gets completed. And while it had, um, gone up, um, right now, this is the only project with, in the RIM qualification. Um, there is no future regional transportation project on the books. This was a priority after all, and the last on the list, um, that was voted by the Board of Supervisors back in two thousand and twelve, thirteen. And killing the, not completing this project, um, would be, I believe, the county would be in worse shape than it is. And we need to, um, continue to keep this for not only safety, but, um, ensuring that, um, we are able to open up the economic standpoint of this county, its regional transportation project. It has been, and I'll be voting yes for it.
Supervisor Toffenauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project, I, I, it, it has gone over budget, and there's been a lot of things that we had to deal with in order to move forward with it. I was on the board back in two thousand and eight, nine, ten, when, uh, Supervisor Callaway and Tryon were on the board. Um, we had many meetings at, at Bret Hart High School. We had many meetings discussing it, uh, moving forward. It's always been part of what this board has been talking about for years and years as a project. We took it on, um, and there were some unknowns. It, it didn't, it didn't, we did not have control over. But we have started this project. We have a contract with Caltrans to complete this project and deliver this project. And, um, I support that. Um, I, I think this is a good project for Calaveras and our constituents and tourists that come up here, um, traveling up here to either Murphy's or even beyond Alpine County. We owe it to them to finish this project. To just wash our hands and walk away from it i- is not a, a good, um, show of faith from this board to our constituents in, in not delivering a finished product. This is something that, um, we just have to hope that we see the goalposts. Supervisor Hubbard, you mentioned moving goalposts. I think we're coming to the end of this project at this phase anyway. Uh, Supervisor, um, Stopper talked about seeing the horizon. I think we see the horizon here. Hopefully, most of all, the, the bad things have gone past us that's happened to us, and we can finish this project as we go forward. So I'm in favor of moving forward and committing what's in front of us, the change order and, um, the two point five million going into, from a RIM fund into the project to complete this wall. So with that, I would make the motion.
Well, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who wants it?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Second by supervisor?
Roll call vote.
Supervisor, second by Supervisor Follender. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll call?
Roll call vote, District One?
Aye.
District Two?
No.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four?
Aye.
District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Excuse me, four one. Thank you, since I've already known, I've accounted that. All right, seeing no further items. Anything from the staff? We stand adjourned.